Thank you, please be seated. Play ball, right. But once again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the April meeting for the Board of Trustees, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and I would ask Peggy if she would call the roll, please.
Trustee Ash?
Here.
Trustee Bridenfall?
Here.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Trustee Flunder?
Flunder.
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Maddox?
Here.
Trustee Rios? Trustee Townsend?
Out.
Here.
All right, thank you Peggy. I would entertain a motion from the Board to approve the agenda and the amendment to the agenda. So move in a second. All right, have a motion in a second to approve the agenda and the amendment to the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2014 Board of Trustees meeting. So move.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries. At this time, we're at item number five on the agenda, and we would ask if there are any patrons or petitioners that would wish to address the Board, and if so, we would ask you to step to the podium on my left. All right, hearing and seeing none, then we'll move forward.
You got this.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one. Please state your name and address, if you would, for the record.
My name is Jeremiah McCleeny, 1034 Waverly, Kansas City, Kansas.
All right, sir, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. I am here representing the African American Student Union, and I have with me Ms. Jessica Walker, one of the members of our African American Student Union TASSU. On February 27th through March 1st, we attended the Big 12 Conference on Black Student Government at Iowa State University, and it was a very rewarding experience for us, and I just wanted her to share just a couple of minutes about some of the things that she learned that she's able to bring back to campus.
All right.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jessica Walker, and I would first of all like to say that it is an honor and a privilege to be able to speak before you all this afternoon. I'm a current student at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, my major is in early childhood education, so I'm going to be a preschool teacher.
Thank you.
And I've been a part of TASSU. I was a previous student before, and I just came back this previous semester, so this is my first semester back on campus, my first semester back in TASSU. And we attended the Big 12 Leadership Student Government Conference in Ames, Iowa, at the dates that Mr. McCleeny had spoken. And is it okay if I share a few things with you that I learned?
Sure.
It shouldn't take me too long at all. Okay. One thing that I loved about the conference is the fact that the focus is based on the needs of young African American students. We are the minority here, not just on campus, but all over the world, African American students are the minority, and the college graduate rate is not as high for us as it needs to be. The conference was based on just getting us to open up and talk about those issues that we face as being young, gifted, and black. And I learned a lot from the sessions that I had attended, all were given by black students and presenters that were entrepreneurs and they own their own business in corporate America. And my first bit of experience was before we stepped foot in the conference. It was that moment when we had all, it were about five of us that attended, when we all got into the van together. That was where my learning experience started, because I had not been around these people for very long. We just came together once every couple of Thursdays, and we discussed how we're going to enhance our student union as a whole, and we didn't know each other very well. So it was really, it was something I didn't really think about, it's okay, well, I'm not going to assume this, I'm not going to assume that, I'm just going to go and have a good time, you know, and see what I can learn. And we had learned so much from each other that day alone, just the drive, we had engaged in discussion, we had shared our views and our different experiences, and we had really just gotten a chance to connect even more. That didn't mean we didn't have issues, because we had, we had a couple of moments where we were really getting to know each other, and it was kind of difficult, you know, for us. But ultimately, we were able to come back together, and we plan on forming a retreat for our student union group. That way, we all can get to know each other better and learn about our different strengths and weaknesses, so we can grow together as a whole. A couple of workshops that I had went to, one of them is called "You Are Smarter Than You Think," and it's, and the two of the main points that I received out of that is that you can help a whole lot of people and still suffer yourself. So for us, it really meant that education is our prime focus and goal here at the campus, that's why we're even here. You know, if it weren't for our education, we would not be able to be a part of a black student union group as we are. So our goal is to help each other academically, and help each other grow, and help each other graduate, and that's really one of our primary focuses. And then in another workshop, I had learned, and the title of this workshop is called "Are You Worth Following?", and it basically went out of it is that if we are the African American Student Union that we say that we are, we need to be an influence of positive light to other students and other people in our community. And some of us are asking for a cake to be made, not realizing we have eggs, flour, and sugar right in front of us. Networking is also important for us as students to come together and network and meet different people in the community who are willing and who want to help young students, they really want to help us out. All we have to do is say, you know, hey, we're the African American Student Union, we need help, you know, and some people even find it difficult to say that. And then one more I wanted to share with you is, it's called "The Gift, The Curse: The Young Black and Overextended." And all of our speakers were amazing, but this one in particular was how not to overextend yourself. We're small in numbers, there are about maybe four or five of us that are actually active in TASSU. And there's, we can sometimes create so much work for us to do, we put it all on ourselves, our schoolwork gets put off to the side, or we do too much and things don't end up coming out right, because we all don't play an equal role in getting those things done that we need to get done. And another thing that we can do is we confuse motion with action, doing all kinds of movement and hurrying and nothing ever gets done. So it's important for us to delegate and prioritize and to kind of declutter our minds, so we all can get things done that we need to get done. So we need not to carry so much on ourselves as an organization, we need to evenly and effectively to take part in something that we're currently working on, and it relieves the stress of our advisor Jeremiah. He works hard, he works very, very hard, just trying to keep our organization up and running. You know, when I came into it, he's doing our meeting minutes, and we need to take that on as ourselves, and to relieve some stress from him, because he does a lot here on campus already as a committed employee. So we really need to refocus and get back on track, and really do things the way that, in a way that the college will be proud of us, and that you all will be proud of us too. So, thank you very much, I know I said a mouthful, but thank you very much, and I appreciate you just listening to me explain.
Well, thank you very much, it was very enlightening, and I would open it up to the Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Yes, you did excellent.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you came back.
Thank you.
You hear yourself say, come here.
I will just say real briefly, thank you for this opportunity, but as we drove back from the conference, I had two students say that they had never really thought that it was really a tangible idea for them to continue on with their education after leaving KCKCC, but they commented that after being in Iowa State and interacting with other college peers of theirs, they can see that happening for them, and that was the most rewarding experience that I could have ever asked for them coming back. So I'm glad that they came back, they came back with renewed energy, and I'm really excited about the direction that our organization is going to take for the rest of this semester and going forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Dr. Daniels?
Yeah, I did have a question. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you gave a really good presentation about what students need to do, but I'm curious, was there any conversation about what colleges need to do to be helping young people be more successful? And if you don't know, if you have a thought about that, please share it with Dr. Gibbons later, about what, because I think that's one of the things we're looking for, is that the college providing the necessary assistance or support to help students be successful.
And you know what, and I really think that you all are doing all that you can. A lot of times, we're not, we're, it's just like I said, we're going to look for that cake that's already made, and we got, you know, we have flour, sugar, and eggs already for us. So you all are providing the flour, sugar, and eggs, we have to just make the cake. And I think a lot of times, when colleges do all they can, like you all put, you know, money out there for us to take advantage of, because you all want to help us be successful. So a lot of it was focused on what we're not doing, and what we can do to be successful and to receive that help, but that's good. If I do find out that, though, I will let you know.
Thank you very much.
We need to refine the recipe, maybe that's.
And I think if we can get enough groups together and get these two in front of them, that'll probably start to happen, because it was a great summary presentation, thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any others? Right, excuse me. Yes. Yes, we're at Agenda Item Number Six to move toward an executive session, but I see a lot of students here, Dr. Gibbons and everything, do we need to think about?
Yeah, I totally agree.
So you would need a motion to amend the agenda to consider whatever item the students are under, out of order, and to take it up at this time, you need a second, then a vote, then you can take it up.
So move. All right, second by Trustee Townsend, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so wherever we are and whoever's responsible for all these wonderful students being here, let's move to those items, please.
All right, thank you. I think most of them fell under my time, and the first group of students would be, I'd like to introduce Ms. Stacy Tucker, Director of Honors in PTK, Phi Theta Kappa.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Today, I have three students that you have met before, and one student you have not yet as a Phi Theta Kappa officer, but first, we have Tyler Ross. Tyler is majoring in Journalism, he will be graduating in May, and he's going to UMKC in the fall. You have met Ryan before several times, Ryan Proctor. Ryan is majoring in Engineering, he's graduating and moving on in May, he'll be going to KU. We have Adriana Rodriguez. We're not ready to let Adriana go yet, she's majoring in Nursing, and will be back next year to finish her degree. We also have Wendy Minarez. Wendy, can you please stand? Wendy is currently the Student Senate President, but she is our outstanding member of Phi Theta Kappa this year. She's a pre-med major, she'll be graduating next year, and she will be back, as of today, she was offered a position to work for Phi Theta Kappa as an officer next year. So I'm going to let Tyler start the presentation.
All right, thank you, Stacy.
How's everybody doing, Doc?
We're well, thank you.
First off, I would like to say that our college project, excuse me, received a top award in its category. The project was highlighted by Five Days of Giving, United Way, Pink Ribbon Day, the Mosaic Day Center Zoo Trips, the Bow Merrill Drive, the Community College Completion Events, and the Better World Book Drives ahead on campus.
Our Honors in Action Project received distinguished recognition. This project focused on Phi Theta Kappa studies topic for the year, including Campus Wine, Gene Drive for Central Avenue Center of Hope, Habitat for Humanity, Tornado Relief in Moore, Oklahoma, and Christmas in the City.
We also received a distinguished service award project. This award is focused on all the service projects we do throughout the year by our chapter, all the service projects that were completed by our chapter this past year, sorry.
We received the Great Idea Award. This project focused on the work that has been completed in Moore, Oklahoma, and with Habitat for Humanity. This project reached across campus and the Kansas region.
We also received honorable mention for the Sister Chapter Award. This award highlighted our work with Independence Community College.
Ryan Proctor received honorable mention for distinguished chapter officer award. Ryan has brought knowledge, leadership, and a great work of ethic, not only to our college, but also to our community. He has been influential in planning several events throughout the Mu Delta Chapter College and community.
Wendy Minarez received distinguished recognition for Member Award. Wendy has given, even given up her free time to represent Mu Delta Chapter with the projects. Her involvement showed us the officer team, that she has the skills to multitask many roles in which she must demonstrate her leadership skills, and apply the principles of Phi Theta Kappa in order to be successful. Wendy Minarez has been an exceptional part of this year's core of our chapter members. Wendy will also be receiving a Phi Theta Kappa International Award for Member of the Year next week in Orlando, Florida. Wendy, can you please stand and be recognized?
Also, our chapter received the Yearbook Award. This is something we have with all of our pictures and highlights of the years, based on the study topic, the culture of competition.
Overall, the chapter received honorable mention for the most outstanding chapter in the Kansas region, as well as the five-star chapter award, which is the highest level for Phi Theta Kappa chapter programming.
And next, which I think is the most meaningful award we've gotten, I say "we" because I feel really proud of it, too. Stacy Tucker won Continued Excellence Award for Advisors. Stacy is an inspiration to everyone here at KCKCC. Stacy is always full of new ideas for projects that will better our community and serve our neighbors. She is an amazing person who continues to encourage our members to have a servant heart, more by her deeds than by her words. Watching her in action is an inspiration all into itself. Stacy will also be receiving a Phi Theta Kappa International Award for Advisor of the Year next week in Orlando, so we're all really proud of her.
Stacy, would you please stand and be recognized?
And we have a short little video to show you the highlights of our projects this past year.
We would like to point out that all of our awards and everything are over there for anybody who wants to see them, and we would like to thank the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gibbons, Dr. Vitale, Mr. Bodie, the faculty and staff of KCKCC, who continue to support Phi Theta Kappa each year. This concludes our presentations, thank you for our time.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ryan, and the group trustees, do you have questions, comments? Wonderful, you continue to do us proud every year, so thank you so much, and congratulations for all of your accolades and awards, they're certainly well deserved. Stacy, thanks again for your great leadership, we talk so often about how great the students are, and they are, they really are, but sometimes there's got to be somebody there who's sort of, sometimes it's probably like herding cats, but, you know, once you get them all channeled in the right direction, why, these are the kind of things that are possible, so congratulations.
Thank you guys for supporting us, and also, I want you guys all to know that we are conscious about that none of these projects and things we do would be possible without you guys, without your support, and also Stacy, because we know you guys do a lot for us, so thank you for that.
All right, you're welcome, you're most welcome, thank you. Okay, Dr. Vitale, next.
Okay, the next group of students is under the direction of Mr. Jim Mayer. So Jim, if you would like to come up and introduce your jazz groups that are back there? We recently returned from the Pittsburgh University Jazz Festival, and received a number-one rating for the 15th straight year, we also had 10 outstanding musicianship awards. Most of these students attend classes on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so they all made a special trip here today to be here, I'm very grateful for them fitting this into their busy schedule, their busy lives. I push them as hard as I can without pushing them over the edge, sometimes that does happen, but I'm very proud of the work that they do. They come from all through our service area and all across the metro, as far as McPherson, Kansas, Nobnoster, Missouri, a number of them are going on to four-year schools next year. So again, thank you for all of your support, I won't introduce them all to you, but we are grateful for your support of music. Also, each one of you has a folder, here are some of the events happening that we're putting on in the next several weeks. All of the events, three events that are in here are all collaborative efforts with different entities across campus. Our Jazz by the Lake Series is sponsored by four or five different outlets on campus, including, our last event was actually underwritten by our baseball coach, Steve Burleson, which might be a first in the history of music and athletics collaborating on something nationally.
Other than the National Anthem, right?
Well, that too. We also, were written up in the latest issue of Jam Magazine that's in there as well, so thank you, and a special thanks to Dr. Shirley Walker, who does a great job, wonderful person, inspiring person to work for, so thanks a lot.
Well, congratulations to the group, and on your successful competition, and thank you for making a special trip out here on a Tuesday in order to present before us, and are there other trustees that have comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, with your permission, really, it is about the students, I would like the students to introduce themselves, and then let us know what their, those that are going on to four-year schools, we'd like to know what those schools are.
And what instrument they play.
Yes, they should introduce themselves.
Maybe name, maybe name instrument or instruments played, and where you're going on to school, please.
Yes, yes.
Amy Tremaine, trombone, and playing at KU.
Richard Black, I play the valve trombone, and I'm not 100% sure where I'm going on.
Okay.
Matt Ogilvy, play the bass trombone and bass guitar, planning on going here for another year and undecided after that.
I'm Brandon Parsons, I play the trumpet, I'm moving on to Florida in a couple of years.
I'm John Tobobin, I play trumpet, I sing, I plan on either going to Friends for Music Education, or KU for Biomedical Engineering at the end of the semester.
Interesting.
I'm Ray Vaughn Haggerty, I play tenor saxophone, and hopefully after this, go to Wash Mariner University.
My name is Charles Glover, I play tenor saxophone, and I plan on going to UMKC in a couple of years.
My name is Mackey Jones, and I play guitar, and I'm hoping to go to UMKC for music composition.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
My name is Dylan Ritter, I play alto saxophone, I'm a firefighter, I'll be here until I finish my fire science degree.
My name is PJ Churn, I play flute piccolo saxophone, and I sing, I'm planning on going to K-State to study nutrition.
Hi, I'm Joshua Andrews, and I play trumpet, and I plan on coming here for another year.
Okay, wonderful.
Hi, my name is Kareem Sales, I play piano, and I play the trumpet, and I study music, and I'm going to continue studying music somewhere, don't know where I'm at, but I'm forever studying music.
All right. Outstanding. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, and I believe it's the last group of students I have, and that's, so I'm going to call up Darren Elliott and Scott Elliott, the coach and assistant coach of our debate team.
Looks like we're going to need somebody from the carpentry shop again.
Thank you.
Yeah, your own.
Okay, if you all want to come up here, why don't you come up and stand over here, they can see you.
they can see you? Appreciate your time and recognizing the students today. We're very excited. We just returned from Denver about 11:30 last night, in fact, from the Community College Nationals. I wanna talk about a number of awards they've received over the last couple of months at some of our national tournaments. Gretchen just got out of taking a test, so I'm glad she was able to join us. So, a couple of things. I'm gonna introduce them and then talk about the awards. So, on the end is Alex Glanzman. He is from Lawrence High School in Lawrence, Kansas. Katie Ford is next to him. She is from Fremont, Nebraska. Anthony Joseph is next to her. He is from Little Rock Central High School in Arkansas. Next to Anthony is Christopher Miles from Fort Osage in Missouri and Michael Smith from Fort Osage in Missouri. And next to Michael is Gretchen Torres. Gretchen is from St. Joe, no, Atchison. Nope. Where are you from?
I'm from California.
California, that's right. Well, she lives in Atchison now, right? You live in Atchison now. Who's next to you? Oh, Ashley Shockley. And Ashley attended...
Homeschooled.
Was homeschooled, right? Yeah. And is first year at KCK here with the team. And then next to her is Matt Kossis, who is from Omaha, Nebraska. Next to him is Brian Gonzalez, who's from Omaha, Nebraska. And, yeah, there you go, Mr. Bodie. Next to him is Talia Smith, who's from Emporia High School in Emporia, Kansas. Everybody up here is brand new to the team this year, except for Alex, who's on the very end. And so, we had sort of a rebuilding year of bringing in new folks and so, that presents a lot of challenges, but they certainly rose to the challenges. I wanna talk about, first of all, the JV National Tournament at Johnson County Community College in the middle of March. We had a number of these folks compete. Michael and Gretchen took second in the novice division. This is a division for people who are branded in debate, period, so at the college level. And then Matt and Brian made it to the final four and finished third at that JV National Tournament. In addition, respectively, they were the top two speakers of the tournament. And then on the end, Katie and Alex also were in that tournament and made it into the top 16. Then we attended the CEDA National Tournament. This is a national tournament that is open to all colleges and universities, two and four-year, the University of Indiana. At that tournament, 172 teams began competition, whittled the field down to a bracket of 64. Some notable awards from that tournament. Matt Kossis was named one of CEDA's All-Americans. Only 30 students in the country receive an All-American Award. This is based on commitment to your college, to your classes, to your community and to competition and how well you do in all of those areas. And so, he was one of only 30 students nationwide. We had two teams that made it to elimination rounds, Matt and Brian and Katie and Alex. Katie and Alex made it to the field of 32 before dropping out of the tournament to the eventual national, second place runner-up from OU. Matt and Brian made it to the Sweet 16 of the National Tournament. This is the first time in the history of our college that we had a team advance that far at CEDA Nationals. And 172 teams mean there were 344 individual speakers at the tournament. We've never had anybody placed in the top 20. This year, Katie Ford was ninth in the country as an individual speaker. And so, that was very impressive to have somebody placed in the top 20 and to place actually in the top 10. The team as a whole, based upon how they'd done all year, received the McClintock Trophy. This is the trophy that's awarded to the top community college in the nation. This is the ninth time in 11 years that we've won this trophy. Joy McClintock coached in Florida and was actually Scott's college coach. And so, the organization named this trophy after her and ninth time in 11 years. And then, we finished 10th in the nation overall and somebody has that plaque. Other schools in the top 10 in the nation included OU, Harvard, Liberty, University of Kansas, Northwestern, US Military Academy. It's worth a good group of colleges and universities in the top 10. Then, we, most of those folks came back and then Matt and Brian stayed for the NDT, which is the National Debate Tournament that was also held at Indiana. This tournament is the one that began in 1942 and is kind of college debates equivalent of the NCAA basketball tournament. That is, you have to qualify, you have to be one of the top 78 teams in the country to get in. Last year, we were the first community college to qualify back-to-back since 1982 when Odessa, Texas, did it. This year, Matt and Brian helped KCK become the first community college in the history of that tournament to qualify three years in a row. No community college has ever qualified three years in a row since its inception in 1942. And so, we were very excited to have that honor and those guys are coming back next year, so hopefully you'll see number four next April. Also, should mention that in the NDT, they also have a ranking system and nationally, we ended as the top community college in their ranking system and we tied for fourth in the nation with a school you may have heard of in Cambridge, Massachusetts called Harvard University. We tied ranked, tied with them in the nation. Finally, we attended the Community College National Tournament this past week in Denver and we had a number of awards there. One of our alumni who debated here and every year takes a week of his personal vacation, he has a corporate job with AT&amp;T, volunteers a week of his time every year to go with us to the Community College Nationals because he loves that tournament that much, was honored this year by all the coaches there. One of three, three coaches every year selected to receive a fellowship award for coaching. And John Brethauer, who is from Tonga Noksi High School who competed here and then has gone with us to that tournament every year the last nine years, received that award this year, so we were really happy for John that he received a fellowship award for coaching. The team of Matt, Kossis and Anthony Joseph finished by winning the Parliamentary Debate Division Gold. This is the, this marks the 11th time in a row that KCK has won a national title in one of the three debate events at that national tournament. This was exciting because those two got paired up a week before the tournament. They hadn't debated together before this year, during this year. We paired them up a week before the tournament. We sent them there. They began the tournament with a two-and-two record, which meant they were one loss away from elimination and had to win everything from there on out and they did it. And I let Dr. Givens know that the last two community colleges they beat in the semifinals and the finals were from California, so, once again, reminding her she made a good choice. So, we were really excited with their success. The team won Gold Award in Debate Overall, which is a sweepstakes category and it's the top award you can receive. And so, as a squad, we won that. And so, this again is the 11th year in a row with a national title at the Community College National Tournament. A couple of these folks are leaving this, at the end of this year, even though they are freshmen. Michael and Chris have received scholarship to Lindenwood University in St. Louis and Gretchen has received a debate scholarship to the University of Texas at San Antonio. And so, she'll be moving down to a little bit warmer weather at the end of this semester. Everybody else is coming back, so we're excited for next year. In addition to the tournaments they attend, they have put in hundreds of hours in the community this year at high school tournaments, helping with high school recruiting, helping coach at high schools, helping at high school tournaments. They serve on Student Senate and different campus college committees. So, we're very proud of the work they've done. Our assistant coach, Scott, of course, continues to work, you know, as tirelessly as everyone else, driving vans, judging debates, like 800 of them this year, something like that. Close, not quite that many, but more like 700. So, a lot of work is put in by a lot of people and we are very appreciative of the support that you all give us. This support includes in the four days I was actually back between the NDT and Firopi. I stopped, Ms. Flunder stopped me in the hallway and called two different parents on the phone while I was standing there to help me recruit kids from local high schools. And so, I talked on the phone to a couple of different parents and have leads on a couple of kids, even though one of them was only in the eighth grade. We're doing some, we're doing some advanced recruiting. But we seriously appreciate all of the support from the board, to the president, vice presidents, the deans and all the faculty and staff who helped make us successful. So, thank you very much and we are excited to be here and appreciate your time.
Well, congratulations, you know, once again. Outstanding. Congratulations to the coaches and each individual from the team. Congratulations. Thank you for your representation of our school, our college, our community and certainly yourselves and your families. You've made everyone extremely proud. It truly is a legacy of excellence. I search for adjectives every year and I'm about out, but it's a part of a legacy of excellence that, you know, is just amazing. So, other trustees.
If we could, just have them, these old eyes, I can't see, if you kinda parade yourselves in front of us here so that we can get a good look at the trophies that you all have won. And then we probably should really shake your hands and congratulate you on continuing this excellent legacy.
Congratulations, young fella.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Congratulations, young lady.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Did you ace that test?
Keep it up, young man. Keep up. Congratulations, young lady. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Great job. I'm like... And thanks to you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Darren, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Very, very much. Once again, let's give them a round of applause.
Chairman Asher, I have one more group.
Excellent. I don't know who wants to follow that.
Dr. Denise McDowell to speak briefly on her Fringe Benefits of Education.
Dr. McDowell. We're not gonna take a long time and I'm only gonna put the PowerPoint in. We were gonna have a full-blown presentation, but we're gonna wait, since you did a lot of presenting today. I'm only putting this in because there's a young gentleman who was here with his aunt and friend and I want to show his face so you know who he is, Lawrence Denny. The reason why I wanna show this is Fringe Benefits of Education is a program that works with young men 17 to 24 years of age. And this young man, Lawrence, he dropped out of high school, he went back to high school and he went over to Baser. He was so proud to come back and let us know he earned his high school diploma. I would often say his GED and he said, "No, it was a high school diploma." So, he was here today with his aunt and he had to be at work at 4:15. And I let him, I said, "Okay, okay, okay, I have your picture. I'll make sure they know who you are." He not only earned his high school diploma as a result of being with the program, he attributes the program for being a power source for him. We talked about what could the college do for so many of our young men who are first-generation low-income, for so many of them who are disenfranchised for a number of ways, what they miss is a source of someone to help them learn how to be a college student. Many of them are here and I think over 39% of the students on our college campus are males, but many of them, I would say, are perpetrating being a college student. They don't have the study skills that they need to have, they don't know how to network, as the young lady said, and they don't always know how to ask for help. Many of them, because of pride and other thing, don't think asking for help is a cool thing to do. So, what we have an opportunity to do on Thursdays, what many would say is do a prep program to help them rebuild their swag, as some of them have done today, my good friend Tevin here, and to understand what it means, as one person did in the Fleet Program, to teach them how to code-switch. So, I'm not gonna do a lot of talking, I just wanted you to see Lawrence Denny. I also have Tevin here, who is currently a KCKCC student. I have Anthony Berry, who is here, who is an over-the-road truck driver, and they will tell you what Fringe Benefits means to them.
Well, first, we give recognition so that you can share with the young man Lawrence, if you please.
Lawrence, where are you staying though? He's hiding.
He's not, he's not here. He has to go.
Well, let's go ahead and give him a round of applause so you can let him know. Finishing up is excellent and being proud of that diploma is definitely worthwhile. We're sorry that he couldn't stay, but this is what, this, you shouldn't short-step this because this is actually what the KCK Community College is all about. So, Jake, as much time as you need.
Good afternoon. My name is Tevin Johnson. I graduated from Washington High School in 2011. My first year, after I graduated, I came to KCK, started taking classes and about the second semester, I was taken up at KCK. I heard about Fringe Benefits of Education. I was, it was in the spring semester and I was falling, backtracking and my grades was really low. I was very disappointed in myself and I got in this program and as soon as I got in there, I saw a guy, Roger, up there calling Mr. Preacher Man, talking, talking very enthusiastic and passionate about the program and that really drew me in, especially what he was talking about, the information about, you know, inspiring yourself and investing in yourself to reach the inner greatness inside of you and push forward towards your goals. And that's, but that's kinda what it's been every time I go to the program, you know. I feel fired up every time I go in there and, but what the main point about the program is to me, it's about setting you in a position to compete. It don't matter where your background is from, it don't matter what you've been through, it's just setting you in a position to where you can compete with where you're trying to go or compete in your field that you are running along in towards your life journey. And so, I have to give, take my hat off to the whole organization. It's really benefited me in a very great way, just keeping my mind on track and keeping me with the right focus to accomplish the goals that I, that I wanna set out for myself. And so, yeah, I'm gonna stop rapping right there, but thanks, you guys and FBOE, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anthony Berry. I've been with Fringe Benefits ever, ever since 2008. It's been a great program for me. It's done so much. I first started off with, you know, just an average, you know, just working a couple of different jobs and then I have spoke with Roger Suggs, which is a part of the Fringe Benefits of Education. And as far as, I've been knowing him pretty much my whole life, but I never did really get into the program until after I had, also, I'm sorry, I don't know if I added this in. I attended Bishop Ward High School, that's where I graduated from, and then I came here to Kansas City, Kansas Community College on a basketball scholarship and I am an alumni of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. But ever since I've been a part of this program since 2008, it has done so much for me. As far as I, whenever I have an issue with anything, I always, you know, speak to either Dr. McDowell or Roger Suggs, they're always there for me and this program has done so much for me. As of right now, I am an over-road truck driver. It was brought to attention to me by Roger Suggs. He was just telling me as far as many different opportunities of things for me to do in my life and I joined the truck driving force and I've been loving it ever since and it's done so much for me as far as with the FBOE program. And I think I'm happy to have this opportunity to be able to come up and speak to you and speak before you about this program and I thank you very much for that.
We don't do this program alone.
Roger is, I think Roger is up there and I have co-opted Dr. Michael Burns to assist with the program. We also have some other participants, Calvin and Justin and Miriam back there and we have a few others because we thought we weren't gonna present today. We sent out a call and said, "Stay home, stay home," and a few of them had already arrived. And because Lawrence and his family did arrive, we wanted to at least share with them. But we kinda build our program on the premise that our students can rebuild their swag.
Have them come up. They're here, they should come up.
They should, we can rebuild our swag and this is one of their things and, you know, that wouldn't have been a word I would have used, but I know every time I use it, the young men always smile, so they must think I'm a cool old lady because I can say rebuild your swag. And the other thing is to open opportunities for community-level support and to help them to have a ment- to have a mentoring life coach. What we often say to them is it doesn't cost anything to participate in this program but time and commitment. What makes the program unique is not all the students in the program are KCKCC students, but we encourage them to either become a KCKCC student, to get into a GED program, or to take part in one of the TEC programs. And so, we know that Lawrence, this year, who got his high school diploma, is interested in the automotive tech program. When his friend-girlfriend was here with him, she's interested in the culinary arts program. I learned at that time that Turner did not bus the students over to the TEC program, and she was interested in it in her senior year, and I said, "That's something we need to look into. Maybe we could get other high school students involved if we could get other high schools to be willing to send their students over, much like USD-500 does." But she is interested in the culinary arts program, and we got her connected with Scott at the TEC. So, one of the things that we know about the program is that one out of three of the participants that come to one of our first Thursday events will engage in the program and come and be one of our regular attendees. We know that many of the participants come from right here in our KCK Wyandotte County area. They're not traveling more than nine miles to get here, and so, we know the program is reaching out to our students. We have a database of over five hundred and some folks who've come at some time over the last four years that we use and reach out to, and one of the things we know is that imagery, and this is one that someone shared with me, ten black doctors. Imagine if this was the image that young black boys saw on TV all day. What they see is what they will be. Thank you.
Outstanding.
Dr. McDowell, is this program an extension of our, what is that, intrusive, whatever that word is? It's a word I don't like, but is this an extension or is there the potential of it being an extension to that process?
This is not, this is more an extension of community outreach, and what we find in it is that because of the fact that we get into the program, and one of the images I really liked on here is the fact that our kind of tagline is no more excuses. And so, because our tagline is no more excuses, one of the things that we do is we have an opportunity when they come on those follow-up Thursdays is to really talk to the guys in real talk. I say, "No, no, no. Why are you not going to class? Why don't you have a job? Why can't you do this? Why don't you have that?" And for them, some of them appreciate being accountable. We have Dr. Burns saying, "Here's my card. Come and see me in the ARC." No more. We have students who have challenges with disabilities. We have students who don't want to acknowledge that anymore. And so, the intrusive advising would be a spin-off in some ways because what the advisors will start doing is having those tough conversations with students, but right now, it's an outreach program, trying to get those young men in school.
But if I heard the first young man correctly, he was talking about being a student, right?
Exactly.
And that this program helped him develop the confidence necessary to continue, right?
Exactly.
Well, so then, it makes sense to me that we have several, as you pointed out, young men, that though they have enrolled, how successful, what is the foundation that they have to be sustained being a student? And so, perhaps the connection here is not that we don't outreach, sure, but connecting our students to the resources that we already have. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here, and that we have a component encouraging them to be a part of so that more stories, like what we just shared with us, that because of our outreach effort, because we have dedicated employees to ensuring the success of our students, they are successful, and they come back and share that success, which was what the other story was. So, I just see that a need for some work institutionally and helping this to thrive, so it doesn't necessarily change the outreach aspect of it, but nothing is really more important than reaching within. And that way, we sustain our student enrollment, just looking at it as a trustee. But then, on the other hand, when word of mouth gets out how we take care of our own, that's when they start coming in.
Yes, and it is. It's a retention initiative as well. I think the analogy that we often use with the gentlemen is like your cellphones. Everyone has a cellphone, and at some point, it's going to get to one bar, and when it gets to that one bar, you have to plug up to a power source. And we see FBOE as one of the power sources at KCKCC.
All right, well, thank you all very much. We appreciate you finding your swag and bringing your swag and getting your swag on, all right? We need more swag, is what I understand, so please, bring us more swag. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Okay, Dr. Vitali.
Well, as these gentlemen were coming up, Dr. Walker came up and told me that she had brought a student with her to talk about the College Arts Day, so I said we'd just go ahead and do that at this point. If that's okay, since we have one more student.
I appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much. All right. Nice meeting you. All right. Nice to meet you.
All right. We do not want to miss out on any of the students, so I think Dr. Walker has a presentation for us and a student or two, I don't know. Dr. Walker, please.
Well, if I may tag on to Dr. McDowell, and Dr. McDowell, by the way, your check's in the mail. That was a beautiful setup. She says, "If you can see it, you can be it." And that's true in the arts as well. I did promise Dr. Vitali that in order to get my student out of here at a reasonable time, that I would abbreviate my comments, but I think it's important that we understand the connection of College Arts Day. It is a recruitment event, but it's not just a recruitment event because most people can understand how that a degree in business equals a job in accounting, or that a degree in nursing equals a job at a hospital. But when it comes to the arts, and this is from personal experience, by the way, I come from a long, proud tradition of fishermen, farmers, and commercial truckers. So, while Mom would say, "I was singing in the delivery room," and that was cute for a while when she could put me in ruffles and pigtails, and she'd take me around church socials and county fairs and so on and so forth, and then it was, "Well, Shirley, what are you, what are you going to do in college?" "Well, I want to sing, Mom." "Well, yeah, that's okay for a hobby, but what are you going to do, Shirley?" "I want to sing, Mom." So, part of what we do then in arts and humanities education is build that seamless transition, not just between the levels of education, but how do you take raw talent and develop it into a skill of a sufficient level that you can sustain an income? That's part of our challenge in the seamless transition. So, with College Arts Day, if you can see on the, throughout these PowerPoints, that you'll find little nudges in there about employment opportunities and find a career doing something you love and so on and so forth. The partnership there is with, we partner with USD-500 and Prep KC, and then what we do, next slide, please. What we do is we send a poster like that to the high schools and the guidance counselors and the arts teachers and students, self-select. We can handle up to eighty students because we divide them into two tracks, a visual track and a performance track. And when they come to us, they will sit in on parts of four college classrooms in different disciplines depending upon their track. And two of those names up there, I want to particularly call your attention to. Some of them you'll recognize as being our full-time faculty, but J.T. Daniels. J.T. Daniels is Kansas City Kansas Community College alumnus, who has had first Friday exhibitions in the crossroads and also is also a practicing tattoo artist. Also down on the performance track, I'll call your attention to Danielle Schweitzel. Danielle Schweitzel is a KCKCC alumnus. She's a native of Leavenworth. She took her degree here. She went on to a master's somewhere in the, in the UK. I don't remember exactly where. She's back here teaching for us as an adjunct faculty member and also tours around the United States during the summer doing professional summer stock, a very up-and-coming young woman and a picture of success. So, the high school students then are divided down into tracks and then subgroups of ten so they can fit into our classrooms, and they're interacting all day with our faculty, with our students, and with external people who know what it means to be a practicing artist. And then again, next slide, please. They'll go, we have formal assemblies where they learn some of the nuts and bolts, or we go over again some of the nuts and bolts of what it takes to enroll in college and what it takes to be financial, to get your finances figured out. What are the career options? Next slide, please. Student panel, you saw there. And then, other areas are displayed and presented during some of these larger assemblies that we couldn't necessarily fit them into the, into the classroom tracks. And I will say one other thing about Arts Career Day, or College Arts Day, sorry. That was Illinois terminology, but I'm in a new state now. College Arts Day is based on, we deal with high school self-mores. And when I talked with USD-500 and Prep KC about that, they kind of apologized about that. Why would we want self-mores? Are you kidding? Statistically speaking, it takes between two and seven contacts to get an undecided high school student from "I've never heard of KCKCC" to "I want to go to KCKCC." And so, that, at high school self-mores, if that's their initial contact with us, my coordinators have two more years, two more years, to send them tickets, to bring them to debate tournaments, to go out and clinic their bands and choirs. Two more years. How are we doing? Well, these are just some of the quotes from the student evaluations. "Today, I learned I can have a career in art. I learned I need to do my schoolwork now because it will become important later. After today's event, I will work harder and believe in myself. I was surprised how many things you can learn at a community college. Today helped me see what my options are, and I am truly inspired by today's events." That's what the high school students had to say about it. You've heard what I'm trying, what we're trying to build within the division. I thought you'd like to get a perspective from a less biased person. When the merger between the former Social and Behavioral Sciences and Humanities and Fine Arts Division occurred in February, I didn't have time to plan a second date. So, I turned to my good colleague, Dr. Hira Nair, and said, "This is what we're doing. Are you, are you up for the ride?" And luckily, she said yes and provided one of the most articulate students who served on our panel. Please welcome them.
Thank you, Shirley. I knew I had a home in social science. Now, I have a larger-hearted home in humanities and social science. So, thank you, and I coordinate the education program here at Kansas City Kansas Community College, and I thank you all for hearing me speak for a few seconds here because I'm going to give it up to Catherine Daniels. I also wanted to thank Dr. Walker for providing me the opportunity to participate in the College Arts Day. To be honest with you, it seems such a natural venue for me because my students in the teacher education program make contact with the K through twelve system on an ongoing basis through the classes that we offer here in education, but it was a good audience to have all captive in one place so that we could introduce them to the very warm, hospitable environment of KCKCC. So, that was an advantage to have them all in one place. I also enjoyed the experience of making eye contact with them, which means that I could go from table to table and enjoy the, the questions that they had that was more up-close and personal rather than speak to a larger audience. So, while they were on break, I was able to walk from table to table and engage them in a one-on-one conversation, and I'm glad to have been able to do that. I did provide them program brochures and information about my availability. That's, of course, all basic. I would now like to introduce Catherine Daniels. She is unfortunately going to leave me, us, this year, but to better and bigger things. She is moving to UMKC to study secondary education, get her certificate in teaching. She would like to, you like that, JD, to teach psychology in high school or to be a high school psychologist. She is still slightly undecided, but I think that's what she aims to do. She is extremely thoughtful and committed to children of diverse backgrounds. She took the lead in our recently completed ethnic festival, the Wyandotte County Ethnic Festival in the Children's Corner. She has, she's also the outgoing president of the KNEA Student Chapter at the college for whom I'm, for whom I'm a mentor. I'm happy to also announce that she recently, this year, she won the Rodney Van Zandt Scholarship, given to, to a student who's committed to education, and also, she won the outstanding local student leader who shows high professional development, advocacy and outreach, and teamwork and communication. So, here she is to talk about the College Arts Day. Thank you.
Welcome, Catherine.
Can you hear me? Okay. I thought the College Arts Day was a, first of all, a kind of a nice change of pace for me. We do a lot of outreach and things with young children, and we're always going, going, and doing in our academics, but we have to think about the next people coming in. As teachers, that's our, our job, who's, who's the future. That's, that's what we're doing. So, I know when I was in high school, college seemed so far-fetched. It was, as I've heard other people say, non-tangible. It seemed so far away. And so, for the kids to come in and be able to speak to us kind of casually and answer their questions was really nice for me to kind of take a step back and not think, "Well, I know everything at KCK. I've accomplished it. I'm on to bigger and better things." You know, there's people that come in and they need your help, and they need to know what KCKCC has to offer. I tried to, one of the questions they asked that was kind of entertaining was, "What's a everyday, you know, what's a normal day like for you?" And I think all four of us had completely opposite answers, which was nice, though, in a sense, to make it personable. We know that, you know, KC, you know, KCK is community-based. We try to meet the needs of our community. Quality faculty, definitely. Mentorship, mentorship, mentorship. I walked in here from the community college that shall not be named across the way, where I was just a number. I came here, I'm going to drop this bomb, I'm a high school dropout, okay? Anything, I'm sorry, was like really far-fetched for me, and I could see in these kids' eyes for like one second, they're like, you know, we're just barely trying to grip them, and when they look in my eyes, or they look in another student's eyes, and they see, like, it's there, and KCK is a vehicle for that, or that nice stepping stone, where UMKC and all those other big colleges, so many, you know, so many students, and we offer that because we're community-based. We run a good ship, you know? We've got good, like I said, good faculty. I see familiar faces everywhere that I go, and they're saying hi, and we're all starting to know each other. People that are far from home, people from Nebraska, I heard them saying, they're, they're offering homes here. I would like to see KCKCC offer, you know, continue to offer this. The Arts Day was fantastic, you know? Getting them at sophomores, I didn't drop out when I was, when I was a sophomore. No, I didn't. I dropped out when I was a senior, and that's when you're losing them. But, you know, here I am, and I'm continuing. Nobody knew that I was a dropout. That doesn't define me. You know, it's, and by letting these students know that your past doesn't define who you are, you aren't what happened to you. You're going to be what you chose to be, and KCKCC offers those vehicles. They offer the opportunities. We did Francis Willard Outreach. We're painting, you know, schools. We're doing things. We're giving back because, you know, your time is your most valuable commodity, and when you give it, and people are interested in yours, and you can invest yours. I'll ramble on, but I think I got my point across. So, I'm really glad to see everybody here. Thanks for listening, and I look forward to the success of this organization and this institute.
Thank you. Thank you for more.
Thank you. Thank you.
So...
So simply to conclude, thank you so much, Board of Trustees, Vice Presidents and Dr. Gibbons, for putting up with this craziness and we'll do what we can to rock on.
All right. Find that sway. Yeah, all right. Okay, well, congratulations on the successful event and for all the good work and help that you're doing for all the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Janice McIntyre.
I promise this will be very short and very sweet. I'm not going to do the cup thing like the honors folks can. That just looks overwhelming. We don't have any medals, but AAUW has had another successful program this semester and as sponsor, I'm very proud of all the things that we've been able to do for students. One of the exciting things that happened to us, I was sitting in a meeting last November and one of the people next to me said, "I have tickets left for Chelsea Clinton. There are only four." I said, "Let me have them now. I want to bring students." And so we got to bring students to the STAR opening luncheon at UMKC. They are beginning their Women's Hall of Fame over there and the keynote speaker was Chelsea Clinton. I really admired listening to her commitment to doing things with the civic outlook, your commitment, what you're doing. She has left, I don't know if you're aware, the New York Stock Market stuff that she was doing and she's working hard now with the Clinton Global Initiative and their number one goal is to eliminate the terrible water that's killing so many children worldwide. I'm going to turn it over to Donnie Castleberry and Brandy Patterson and let them tell how they got their power source from that day.
Good afternoon, guys. I just wanted to take this opportunity to tell you how great this school is. This is my first time being around something like this. I've been to two community colleges, but like the last speaker said, I was just a number. I didn't have any help and I'm from Detroit, Michigan, which is very different from Kansas City. And this is only my second semester here, but I've been involved with KCKCC for a year. There's not a face in here I haven't seen around the school or in the community and since I've been here, the school has given me, I don't know, a different type of confidence. I've been heavily involved with the community. I've done work with the commissioner, Terrence Medox. I've done work for the mayor. I didn't know I was this smart until I got here and these guys, the teachers, the faculty, the Women's Resource Center, the counselor, financial aide, I work in a business office as a student worker. Everybody is awesome. This school is a great place, like she said, to give students that vehicle and that push. Everybody here is great. I mean, they really are. If I wasn't working on being an emotional Pisces, I would be crying too because this school is really great. But to AAUW, since junior high school, I've always felt the need to reach out to my peers of a female gender. I wanted to boost their confidence or offer support to them because everybody always wanted to know how I do, what I do, what I was doing was just being me. But if I can teach that to somebody, I wanted to and I saw that they were interested in that. Professor Pacey Cowe introduced me to AAUW and listening to her speak and when she told me what AAUW does, funding money for women to go to college or motivating them, encouraging them and empowering them, at first, my first thought was like, hey, that's my dream. You know, who's doing that? That's what I want to do. So I was happy and honored to join and since then, I've been inspired by the women of AAUW. Professor Cowe, she really pushes me, you know? She rewards my rights and she corrects my wrongs and I felt like I gained a mother here with her. And I have been to inspirational and educational events that has just opened my eyes to a new horizon and given me a brand-new idea. I'm a theater major here. Acting has always been my passion, but I want to, I want to be a teacher, just a different kind of teacher. I want to be a teacher for young women. I want to teach them confidence in fashion and how to be united with each other. I plan on going to North Florida University for Public Relations, Communication and Sports Management, but again, I cannot stress enough to you guys how AAUW has helped me as a woman, how this school has helped me. This school has provided housing for me, clothing for me, funds for me and a school for my son. Yeah, they did all of that in a few weeks. I came here with, from Michigan, with a suitcase and a dream and I have a house full of furniture, a closet full of clothes and I'm in college and I keep going and I don't feel like anything is stopping me. I feel like I can keep going and keep going. So later I plan to maybe become the mayor of Detroit, build the city up hopefully. But then I want to come back here to KCKCC and I want to teach and help you guys here. Thank you guys so much. I know that it starts with you guys, so thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Donnie Castleberry and I'm just thankful that I joined the AAUW. Linda Harris got me involved in that and asked me to join it. And I'm thankful that I got to go over and see Chelsea Clinton. One thing that touched me with her is that when she was raised up in a small town, that her parents told her to go out and whatever she can help to do to get it done and get accomplished. And that's what, that's what I do in my life. I'm a full-time student and I work at the library for student worker. I'm a single parent and all, I dropped out of school in 10th grade and got married. My children all graduated from high school and this semester, I've really had it hard. My transmission, a lot of people doesn't know, my transmission went out of my car. I live in Bonner Springs, so I came in town and sometimes I had to walk to school three miles to get here and to walk home. And the Intercultural Center has really been there for me and I'm thankful for the ones in the Intercultural Center that's helped me through this semester.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, administration, for giving us the opportunity to be AAUW, an organization of opportunity and educational support.
Well, thank you ladies. Your stories are inspiring, so inspiring and your passion is so compelling. We just want you to go for it, you know, to just keep going and keep spreading the word and keep inspiring other women, you know, to come along with you. Thank you so much.
There's one more person here we need to recognize, Valerie Stambersky back here, our Assistant Athletic Director and Women's Basketball Coach. We all know was one of the three finalists for National Coach of the Year. And I think we should recognize that. She didn't win it, but being one of the top three, I thought that pick with Gino or however you pronounce that name was great. So Valerie, congratulations. That's a wonderful award.
Yes.
Well, I didn't know if they wanted to consider Greg Ventello's request for leave of absence for his Fulbright Scholarship at this point in time or do you want to hold that?
I'll make a motion. We take that up right now. Change the agenda to look at that.
Second. All right, we have a motion in the second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right. I think it's Dr. Vitale's show.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Dr. Greg Ventello and let's get him to step forward to the podium. Greg was one of the few individuals in the United States to be selected as a Fulbright Foreign Scholarship recipient and he has the opportunity to serve as a lecturer at the University of Rikius.
The Rikius.
Rikius in Okinawa, Japan for the upcoming academic year. So Dr. Ventello.
I didn't understand the protocol of how to get information to you and I have some information here. Well, let me hand it out to you first.
That'd be fine.
As Dr. Vitale pointed out to you, I'm very excited to share with you this opportunity. I was, I found out in March that I was awarded a Fulbright Grant and the grant is to teach during the 2014-2015 academic year in Okinawa, Japan. And I would be teaching African-American literature, Men and Masculinity is a gender studies course I teach here and a few sections of American Studies or American Culture class. What you have in front of you is the two letters I received. One was from the Fulbright Organization in the United States and then that's followed by a two-page letter from the Japanese Fulbright Organization. And then the final page is, I took the liberty of doing a little research and to find out how other institutions handle when faculty go abroad for Fulbright. And I found out that particularly at the University of Kansas, the faculty member writes a letter outlining exactly when and where and all the details that you see in front of you there. So essentially what I'm doing is, I'm here to ask you for, to approve a leave of absence without pay. The grant, the Fulbright Grant pays my salary for the academic year and I would be delighted to represent Kansas City Kansas Community College in Japan and I would of course return in the fall of 2015 to resume my regular duties.
Mr. Chairman, before the questions start, I move we approve Dr. Ventello's request. Second. Hold on, would you speak into, oh, yeah. I move that we approve Dr. Vitello's request for leave of absence for the Fulbright Foreign Scholarship Program. Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Now, do we have any other discussion or question?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right.
Can I ask, can I answer any questions or anything? No?
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks.
Looking forward to hearing about it upon your return.
Be delighted to share.
Outstanding.
Thanks.
Outstanding. Okay. Well, you know, I lost control of this agenda long conference. I'm just waiting for who's speaking next. You tell me where we're going. I show that we're on Agenda Item Number Six, which calls for an executive session and maybe we need five to eight minutes transition time for people to take care of personal needs. And so I would entertain a motion that anybody would care to make.
I move that we go to executive session for...
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
With a five to eight minute transition period? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Did everybody get that last piece?
Action to follow.
Yes. All right.
Some things a district never changes.
Okay, we are back into the open session and we are at Agenda Item Number Seven. The first item is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor. I have the resolution here, which I will read and then I'll entertain a motion. This is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA Whereas Kansas statutes annotated 4119-C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College, KCKCC, is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41719-C specified property which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC Section 1. KCKCC hereby exempts for Thursday, May 8, 2014, the Delhi area outside the campus art gallery, the old private dining room, from the requirement of KSA 41719-C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of a community opening of the new campus art gallery, passed and approved by the Board of Trustees in a meeting held on April 15, 2014, that is, if somebody motions and we do the business. So moved? All right. Trustee Bryden Thol motions and trustee Townsend second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. All right. Accreditation Commission for Education and Nursing, ASIN. You have the communication.
A very proud moment for our Dean of Nursing and for the nursing program. And I'll ask you to come up as I read this. You might want to have a word or two to say. This letter is formal notification of the action taken by the Accreditation Commission for Education and Nursing. At its meeting on March 13-14, 2014, the Board of Commissioners granted continuing accreditation to the Associate Nursing Program and scheduled the next evaluation visit for Fall 2021. The details of the accreditation visit and the decision put forth by the Board of Commissioners have been sent to the program's nurse administrator. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement. We look forward to continued successes for your nursing program. If you have any questions about this action or about ASIN policies and procedures, please contact me. Sincerely, Sharon J. Tanner, Chief Executive Officer.
Dean.
Obviously, we're very proud to have continued accreditation and I just want to emphasize that it really took the faculty over a year and a half to write this report and that all the faculty were involved in this report and it just gives us something to look forward for the future to maintain our reputation in the community. And I'd like to introduce the three, or the two faculty and the director that I have here. I have Judy Morris here, Teresa Campbell and Anita Kondek, our director. And we're very pleased.
Has to be recognized.
And this has been a very challenging or nervous time for us because there were several schools in Kansas that got, were placed on probation because of faculty credentials and other issues. And there's been a lot of pressure about the number of credit hours we have and that we have to reduce the number of credit hours and trying to balance that with also preparing students for the world of healthcare is a big task. But thank you for all your support and help because the whole college came together when the visit was here and we literally had the old boardroom filled with notebooks. I mean, it took half a day to get them all in there and they looked at every piece of paper that we could find in our offices. And they looked at every piece of paper that we could find in our offices. And this was an example of how thorough they were. They made us do a public announcement in the newspaper that we were having this visit and that people could come and make their comments. And we showed them the email where it was sent to the newspaper. We showed them the confirmation on what date they would put, or run the ad or the announcement. But they wanted to see it in the actual newspaper that it had ran. So, I mean, that was the kind of detail that was on everything we produced for them. But thank you for all your support.
Well, congratulations, Shirley, and thank you to you and your entire team. It's a tremendous accomplishment.
Sounds like we need to expand. Sounds like we need to expand to me, that's all I'm saying. Same thing with the music program, establishing that pipeline. We've just got a lot of expansion to do. We're going to think about that.
Okay. I have two more letters. This is from the Service Members Opportunity Colleges. It says, "Each year, service members opportunity colleges SOC project directors review the participation of individual colleges in the SOC Degree Network System," which is DNS, "to determine how actively they are serving our military students. I am pleased to announce that Kansas City, Kansas Community College fully met the requirements and standards of SOCAD membership during the past year and remains in good standing within the DNS. Congratulations on a job well done."
Outstanding. Outstanding.
And we received a generous gift from the Fire Department, and I want to share with you the letter that was sent to the Fire Department because of their generosity to the college. Dear Chief Jones, thank you for the generous donation of gear to the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Fire Science Program. Due to an increase in enrollment in our program and budget restrictions, we found ourselves short of much-needed equipment. At a time when our department would have found it disheartening to ask students for an increase in fees, we are so grateful that you came to our rescue. I appreciate the cooperative spirit that your crews continue to show toward our students and program as we work together. I would like to thank Assistant Chief Mark Williams, Captain Patrick Dunn, firefighter Travis Thomas, firefighter Mike Herr, and Captain Jennifer Jewett for taking their time to make this happen. You and your department set a standard that all the firefighting profession should strive to achieve. Dr. Nancy K. Thomas, Coordinator of the Fire Science Department, Kansas City, Kansas Community College.
Excellent.
That's our, that's our communication for this month.
All right. Thank you. Agenda Item Eight is the President's Report. The two things you had scheduled in the bullets have been covered. Do you have anything additionally to present?
I do. It's been a busy month.
Good.
I have quite a bit here to, to share, but I'll cut it real short. On March twelfth, trustee Ash and I accepted the invitation extended by the Kansas Board of Regents Chair Fred Logan to attend a reception for community college presidents and the KACCCT Executive Committee. And trustee Ash represented the KACCCT Executive Committee. That's the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. So that was a trip to Pika that was well worth it. One of the things that's happened recently is I've been receiving calls from the community about the National Youth Sports Program that we typically, for the last twenty years, have been able to offer here on this campus during the summer. Well, because of extensive renovations across the campus, including the field, the PAC and the Field House, the program will not be offered this summer. We have fully funded this program since the federal funding disappeared or ended eight years ago, but we just don't have the, the space available to have children safely on our campus on the summer. So we will not be having, hosting that program this summer because we needed not only classrooms, but we needed swimming, golf, soccer, basketball, volleyball, and softball. And we're working on those areas and will not be able to host it. One of the things that happens this time of the year, every year, is that I start getting letters about people's retirement. They reach my desk. And this year, we're doing things a little different. Once we receive the letters of notification for retirement, I'm sending each one of the retirees a letter noting their service and accepting their retirement. So it's not a, it's kind of mixed emotions. And actually, for those that I have developed relationships with, it's not something that we really look forward to, but we know that it's time for them on to move, time for them to move on to the next rung of their journey. So we wish them congratulations, and we'll be celebrating the time they spend here at KCKCC on March, on May second at the...
Lake Quivera.
Lake Quivera Faculty Appreciation Recognition Dinner. Thank you. Which reminds me that this past Sunday, while it was storming, thundering and lightning and doing, and hailing and all of that, we were at the convention center here on campus having an appreciation luncheon for adjunct faculty. And it was a very nice occasion. Thank you, Dr. Walker, and the folks in your division who put that on. It was very nicely done, and they had my favorite, barbecue. So, you know, I was really happy, and there was a lot of conversation and a lot of smiles and a lot of appreciation for the adjuncts. And then the adjuncts were appreciating the faculty and the dean and the administrators for the things that they have done to support them over the years. Don't forget, we're going to Havana. Some folks are going to the Havana Jazz Festival. We have our students who are in the jazz ensemble who are going. And if you can't go, we understand that, but we will accept your check for $3,000 to support a student who is going. So you just let us know, and we'll make you a tax-deductible receipt so that our students can go ahead and participate in that jazz festival. Two areas have submitted requests to, for name changes. Dr. Shirley Walker has submitted a name change of the combination of departments that are assigned to the division that she heads. The departments considered several possibilities. However, the acronyms for some of them were real challenging, and I won't share them with you. But you can imagine if they had chosen the name Arts and Social Sciences. And they didn't really like that acronym, so they passed on it. So the new name for that division is Arts, Humanities, and Social Sciences, and their acronym is AHS. So we'll be, we'll be making those changes college-wide. And Andrea Chastain, along with the staff in the Community Outreach Counseling Program, Women's Resource Center, that's quite a name, has requested that their office be renamed to the Student and Community Resource Center. The new name is certainly less cumbersome, and I think it does a good job of describing the services that they provide for our students. We are discussing the necessity for KCC to offer more apprenticeships. Amazingly, after we began this discussion, we saw that the Vice President of the United States announced the creation of a consortium for colleges and businesses and labor leaders to come together and, and focus on providing college credit for apprenticeships. So we are right in step with what's going on nationally, and we'll be monitoring that and adjusting our program so that we can, so that our students can reap those benefits. Tomorrow, April sixteenth, from ten a.m. until two p.m., we'll be having the Job Fair on campus sponsored by the Career Center in the Field House right here at KCKCC. Area employers will be here, and applications can be filled out and accepted for positions. It's free, and it's open to everyone. My Angelo will be here on Tuesday, June tenth, at the Kaufman Center. The King Tut Exhibit is opened at Union Station, and it will be here till September the seventh. And if you really want to see a play that depicts the season, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we have a star. Our board president, Sheriff Ash, will be starring in a dramatic musical, The Price of Love, at the Maywood Community Church at one-one-two-zero-one Parallel Parkway. And so it would be nice to see your faces there to support him, and I'm sure he would appreciate it. He didn't know I was going to do that, but I did anyway. This past Saturday was really busy, from early morning until night. We had the Wyandotte Ethnic Festival on Saturday. It was amazing, as it has been each year. Congratulations to Karen Hernandez and Melanie Jackson Scott, who were recipients of the Legends of Diversity Award. The Saturday Science, Math, and Technology Academy had its 2014 closing ceremony on Saturday. The memorable statement about the group was, "Congratulations on a fantastic year of learning and social development. You are the hope for the future, starting now." It was really, it was really nice to see the children there with their parents. Saturday, April twelfth, I spent the morning at the KU Alzheimer's Disease Center Annual Breakfast. I serve on this committee, and I serve because it's very personal for me because of my mom's struggle and eventual loss in the battle with that disease. Because I'm on the KU Board, I have, I have to choose a committee to work on. There is quite, and I want to let you know that some of the things, a couple of the things that have been discovered in the report about Alzheimer's, there is quite a disproportionate incidence of disease among upper age groups and also among African-Americans, as opposed to other ethnic groups. However, the studies that are in progress now are revealing that the same behaviors individuals adopt to main, to maintain heart health are identical to the behaviors that will hold Alzheimer's at bay. So that's a wake-up call. There are so many opportunities I've had at Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County, and beyond that have affected me personally. However, none more than serving on the two hospital boards at Providence Hospital and KUMed. I am on those boards because I am the president here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, the most progressive, forward-looking, forward-moving entrepreneurial community college in the entire state of Kansas, and I'm grateful. Thank you. That completes my report.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Entertain a motion?
I move to accept the President's Report.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Evans, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Vitale, do you have anything left? I mean, you had such...
No, you really took care of everything. I had as far as presentations already, and I appreciate that, and I thank you on behalf of those faculty and students that, who otherwise would have still been sitting here. So I appreciate that. I just submit to you my report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any at this time.
I don't have any questions specifically about your report, but I do have a question. And I'm wondering, the issue I know was raised some months ago about the fact that at our Technical Education Center, we currently, and I guess has been our practice for at least a couple of years, do not accept eleventh-grade students...
We've already changed that.
So, yeah, that's what I want to do.
We've notified the school districts that, starting in the fall, their, their students are welcome as juniors if they want to send them. Yes.
Okay. So, beginning fall of 2014...
Fall of 2014.
We'll be able to take the eleventh graders as well?
Yes.
The juniors as well as the seniors? Okay. Outstanding.
They will? I'm sure they will, from Harmon.
It solves a problem for us because students were only in the program for one year, and our programs take two years, and they were not able to complete. Starting as juniors, they will be able to complete the program.
That's outstanding. That's outstanding. Okay. I appreciate that.
Is that going to include Sumner Academy for those classes?
Sumner Academy, of course, would be welcome in our college.
I know they're welcome, but...
Yes. We don't, we can't, we can't limit who we let come in as far as high school students in terms of, we can't say, "Well, if you're from this high school, we'll let you in, but if you're from this high school, we won't." No. They're all treated equally.
No, they made the decision. I understand.
They may, they may choose not to send students. We can't control that, but they're welcome.
I got, I got one other question.
All right.
Your report was fine. On our fire science, it's a couple of subjects that, that are in our fire science program that the rest of Kansas do not have. Have you been working with Jones on seeing if we can't do like the rest of the state of Kansas for the fire science, fire science classes?
What exactly are you talking, I don't...
Okay. A couple of the guys came to me and said that they had to take...
Anatomy and Physiology.
Yeah, the anatomy and physiology. And nobody else asked them to take those two classes, but we do. And they don't teach anatomy in a high school. So it relieves a lot of people who haven't had anatomy to be able to come here. So I want to know, is it something that we can work on, that you can work on, to have those two classes so that people can still go into the fire science without them?
Okay.
Dr. Windows, go ahead.
Yeah, Shirley.
It really comes...
I think that may have to do with the EMT program more so with fire science.
Okay, but it is EMT program, but the rest of Kansas, all the other people that teach that class do not have to have.
I think the Kansas City, Kansas have to be EMTs, don't they? Firefighters?
The problem was that we were having students come who had never had any type of college experience, and they were coming into the EMT course where there's a fair amount of advanced anatomy and physiology, and they had no clue about anything about anatomy and physiology. And they were having trouble doing, and there was a major dropout rate in the EMT program because they couldn't handle the material. So we felt that it would better prepare them if they had at least one college course and one that would be very helpful for them in their career. And we think the retention has increased, and we're still piloting it. But I think it's probably one of the best investments they make, if they ever want to go on and get a degree at this college, that this one EMT course just is, we want them to come and take this one course and be ready to go out and do some of the most invasive, whatever, tasks and make some of the most difficult decisions that any young people have to make, but with no background. And when you said, "Well, anatomy's not taught in the high schools," I think this is a class that we can offer, and Ed can address it, that we can offer for, for high school students to take. And I just truly believe it's a necessity to get our students to EMT and to be able to pass their certification exams.
We do offer it in the high schools.
And so I'm, I'm the person that's pushed that.
And we do offer several sections of anatomy and anatomy and physiology at the high schools, both concurrent...
Which high school? Which high school?
At USD five hundred high schools, we have it. I believe at Wyandotte this semester. I know that they teach it at Bonner. I approved one of the teachers... I approved one of the teachers to teach it at Turner. She's-
Turner and five- but-
She's capable of teaching. But District- no, in District 500, we've taught it about-
Wyandotte is the only place?
We've taught- no. Wyandotte's currently the only one asking to teach that course. But I believe they teach it at Harman or they have in the past.
Yeah, they have done it in the past and are looking at it.
And it's a matter of this. If they have an instructor that has met the requirements, which is basically that that instructor has to have 21 credit hours, excuse me, yeah, 21 credit hours, advanced credit hours in biology or related field and a master's degree. So a master's in education and at least 18 graduate hours, which is what our adjuncts would have, then we will allow them to teach anatomy or anatomy and physiology at their school. And we would be glad to hire a teacher and send them out as well, which we do. I offer the courses that Mary Kobe Peterson asked me to get offered and in our biology and in our anatomy and anatomy and physiology classes, I have no problem getting those classes met and getting instructors out there for them. And we really have no problem with enrollment when students want to take them because they- all they have to have to be able to take those courses is a reading score that allows them to take a college-level course, which any of our students that are taking any of the other courses here on campus have met the requirement they would have to take to take A and P or take anatomy.
And many of the EMT students want to go on and be a- many of the EMT students want to go on and be a paramedic. So the moment they finish and they want to enroll in the paramedic program, well, it's a requirement for the paramedic program. Many of the EMTs that go to fire science, they're wanting a degree as a firefighter. So again, they're gonna have to have a degree. I believe this is one of the most essential courses either one of those careers can take. Either to protect themselves or to protect the people they're dragging out of buildings.
Okay, but the state of Kansas, wait a minute.
Educate at the high school level that if you're considering this, then you want to get this out of the way at high school here and we've got vehicles to be able to do that.
Yes.
Absolutely, and we've done it. It's not just for those that are going into firefighting, but all of the allied health programs. That A and P course is gonna be an essential course. And when we met with the counselors at concurrent meeting just this last month, that is what I proposed to them, that they consider putting in and having either anatomy or anatomy and physiology be taught as a concurrent class because it's required for anybody going into respiratory therapy, anyone going into nursing, anyone going into paramedic.
I can see where it's required for them.
And so that gives them that course.
But it makes the firefighters another year.
Well, actually, not the firefighters. If you- what it does is it makes it another semester if you're gonna be an EMT. An EMT- if you wanted to get an EMT certificate, if you wanted to be an EMT, you're required to have the EMT course, which is an eight-hour curriculum. But, 10 hours, yeah, 10 hours, excuse me. But that 10-hour curriculum is what we- is what the college has adopted from what used to be an eight and four curriculum because the college used to require 12 hours for that. And they went to this as the advanced because the students were taking A and P to be ready to be admitted into that advanced program. So it was a choice that EMT made to get them ready. But that course, that EMT program, getting this really strengthens their understanding in their attempts to pass their board exams to be able to be a practicing EMT.
Okay, but I can leave here and go to Salina and do it in the best time. And that's what I'm saying. That's the other thing. And they still are accepted.
They can do it in a semester there as opposed to taking two semesters.
Two semesters here.
No, Ms. Flunder, actually, we have two. We have a firefighter certificate, which doesn't require any A and P. And then we- no, that's just a firefighter certificate. And they take- they take specific- just firefighter courses. The one that requires the A and P is the Associate of Applied Science and that also requires other gen ed courses. So it's not just to be a firefighter. If they want the AAS degree, that's where they're having to take the A and P. The firefighter certificate, which is a technical certificate, only requires 25 to 26 and that, well, that does have the emergency medical. So that in itself required the A and P when they go back.
That keeps it another semester. Okay, I was just wondering how, you know, I called Salina. I called Dr. Gordon City because I'm just nosy. And I was just, you know, when I'm like, "You're gonna do it in one semester. Why is it taking ours two?" Because in the meantime, they could go on and get a job. But I, okay, I just need to mull it more and-
At international level, starting in January for the paramedic program, it has to be an associate degree. We can't do the certificates anymore. If we are-
Starting January 2015?
Yes. They, I mean, you can't even have a paramedic program unless it's accredited through a community college or an applied science degree. So I mean, and nationally, they are starting to look at an A and P as a requirement for EMT because of what they're expected to do on the job. And you have to prepare them for what they're gonna encounter on the job.
Yeah, I want them to be prepared. I don't mean that. I just wondered how other colleges are doing it in their one semester and it's taking two out here.
Well, we've been taking two, a semester and a half to do EMT for years. And what we've done is we tried to address both issues because it was an eight-hour one semester and four hours a next. So it was a semester and a half. So we condensed it to a 10-hour and then we gave them anatomy and physiology. And we thought they'd be better prepared and could do better in the EMT force because we had not a very good retention rate because they didn't even understand-
Okay. What is your retention rate now? Is it better?
I think it's pretty good. I would say it's about 80%.
80%?
Or higher.
And how many are minorities, you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can sure find out for you. I sure can.
Okay.
But we really are trying to work with it.
I want to know how many is minorities, but I also want to know how many are black.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was our best attempt at preparing them for what, for the next step because-
And one of the things that will happen eventually, the state is gonna- this program will go through the curriculum alignment, at which point, at the state level, there will be a decision made as to whether or not A and P should or shouldn't be part of that program. And for those schools who aren't doing it, if that's the decision to do it, they will have to add it. For those of us doing it, if the decision is to not include it, we would have to take it out at that point.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
To accept his report? Yes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Shirley and Ed, both, for your thorough explanation. Appreciate it. All right. Vice President for Administrative Services, Mr. Bodie.
I submit my report for your approval. It starts on page 35 of your pack.
Move approval of the Vice President for Administrative Services' report?
I got any questions?
All right. We have a motion in a second. Now, questions or discussion?
No, he says it's not yet.
Nope. We don't have a question?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It was a very thorough report, Brian, of course. It always is. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
All right. Item number 11, the finance.
Ask for your approval of the payment of the bills that are listed on page 41 to 123.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
I ask for your approval of the financial reports, page 124 to 127.
So moved?
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. Any comment or question?
Let's see. Well, I will have Brian address. We did have question in committee. Were you able to get with, about the scholarship?
Not yet, sir.
I do want the board to note under the cumulative budget report that it does say we are overbudgeted on the scholarship line by nearly $200,000. We believe that's an accounting circumstance, but we will get you the story behind that number as soon as it is available. We don't have that information at this time, but it is on our radar. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of that.
Okay. Questions? Other questions, comments?
All the other expenses are in line.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then if you'll go all the way back to the agenda on page four. I ask for your approval of recommendations C1 through C9. And I do have a small correction on C5, which said, requesting approval of payment for $31,000 to Bell Carpet. Request approval of the bid from Bell Carpet.
The bid, okay.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I think we have questions.
Number nine, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Is number nine correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's an expanded bill.
What kind of bill is that?
It's for a-
It's for more than one month?
It's for about a month and a half and it included one of the big court actions that was taking place.
That was the asking committee as well and that's the explanation.
Okay.
It was addressing executive session. I don't know if we can address it any further here.
I'm sorry, JD, what?
Well, the background was an executive session.
Yes, yes.
I'm just letting the trustee know.
Mr. Chairman, call for a question, please.
All right. We will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. All right. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item 12, Director of Human Resources, Ms. Coleman.
I'd like to present the April 2014 Personnel Agenda. Section 1 is Separation Information, items 1 through 8. And then section B would be items 9 through 28. And I have an amendment that was dated April 15th with items 2 through 4. I'd like to submit for your approval.
So moved?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to accept the Human Resources report. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Report from committees, agenda item 13.
I have one, just from the College Senate. We need to do our annual meeting with the College Senate, which we've done in the last number of years in May, around our May meeting. We've always had a lunch after our board meeting and now since we're meeting at 3:30, lunch doesn't really make sense. So suggesting that the board meet with the College Senate at 2:00 p.m. on the afternoon of our May meeting and then our regular meeting at 3:30. Do we have a motion that-
What's the date on our May meeting?
The 20th?
It's the 13th.
Is it three graduates?
May the 13th.
May 20th is graduation or some graduation.
Oh, we're gonna get a calendar of the graduations?
It's on May 13th.
Is it on here?
The meeting, the May meeting is Tuesday, May the 13th. Ray is proposing that we go ahead and set our board meeting at 2 o'clock on that afternoon, not the board of trustee meeting, but our meeting with the College Senate at 2 o'clock.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Are there other questions or clarification needed on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we'll, I think we'll ask Peggy to be sure and send us a tickler reminder notice there so we can be sure and I'll get it scheduled. All right. Okay. Other report, Ray?
I just have a couple. I mean, just a reminder of the meet and greet, which will be the 24th of April and this time it will be at the Technical Education Center. Once again, it's kind of building more friends of the college and giving them an update on what we do here. It's from 4:30 to 6:30. I have requested an opportunity for a tour, which will probably be around 6:00 or 6:15. I did talk with Cliff about that, so.
So I know that they've sent that information out and I know Peggy sent it out to us on their behalf and I know we've seen that information two or three times. So, but thanks for reminding us. That'll be Thursday next week.
Yes, next Thursday.
Okay.
And I also just want to, once again, thank Dr. Givens for her role in the education legislative forum that we had at the Technical Education Center. That was our first one and there were about 62 people there. I think the threat of weather that evening kept some folks away, but it certainly was an opportunity for many in the community and from other parts of the metro to come to the Technical Education Center and see the positive aspects of what we do here at the college. So thank Dr. Givens and all the partners. Advancement Council played a key role in that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Speaking of Advancement Council, I think most of us probably have received a letter or was that just me as the board chair that got the letter?
We all got it.
All got the letter requesting, you know, to meet. So that's something I think that we need to coordinate a date probably in the near future. Kathy, do you want to say any more about that or do you?
Well, it's just, you know, we've, certainly attendance has dropped off a bit and even though the report that we made, what, several months ago, to the Board of Trustees was certainly well-received, we are just seeking support from the board and the administration and maybe some guidance in terms of moving forward in what we see their role to be. So that the time that they have spent and certainly Pat Bruni, as the chair, has spent, will be worth their while and ours in terms of advancing our community college.
Okay. So they would request the meeting, we would consent, they would come and present, and there would be a discussion and-
I think, and I think the main thing would be the discussion. Yes.
Would it be a good idea to see if the board, this board is available on the regular Monday meeting for your Advancement Council? Would that be an easier way to do it?
Well, we might. The only thing is we, I think we don't meet it. We're meeting every other Monday now, so I don't know if-
So when's the next?
Maybe it would need to be June, I don't know, I'd have to-
You've met in April already. You've had in April, May, so the next one's not till June.
Right.
So we probably want to maybe do something before that meeting.
And I think it's something where, you know, we want to make sure that, if possible, all the Board of Trustees and the college leadership can be present. We think that's really important.
That's on August 24th, right?
No, no, that's the meet and greet. That's a separate. Yeah, that's, you know, what we're doing with the email.
Marianne, we need to come up with a date for this. So we'll probably ask Peggy to do her scheduling email sort of thing and maybe Kathy, you could kind of help coordinate. And I think Pat Bruni's pretty much available, you know, but-
I know we're getting pretty, into May, we're getting pretty busy.
All right. We'll work toward a date for that. Okay. Any other committee report? I would just report to you from KACC that the, there was an email that came today regarding House Bill 24- House Bill 2506, which is the education funding bill there. I don't know who here at the college has maybe received any information about it, but I'll try to hit a few highlights for you here. It's a 39-page bill, and trustees, I will forward it to you in its entirety so you can look at it, you know, if you, if you so choose, you can't sleep at night or something or whatever.
Is there an executive summary, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. It's kind of what I'm getting ready to sort of give you here.
I second that emotion, yeah.
But new section 63 is the new GED program, encouraging us to begin to think and plan how to utilize this program to get more students' GEDs and tech certificates. And I've heard Dr. McDowell talk about that and so on and so forth, but there is some money included for marketing. Non-traditional marketing that reaches a specific demographic that, you know, probably doesn't cost too much. But tuition for tech ed was approved at $12 million, and it returns our 1.5% cut that they made law last year in a two-year budget. So that 1.5% cut translates to about $2.1 million for community colleges. So that, you know, that makes it very, very good for us. There's some detailed stuff, and I, I won't read that. You can read it when you get the email, but I'll just, in the executive summer, we consider it to be a good year, we being KACCT, to get our 1.5% cutback, which as I told you is $2.1 million for the two-year sector. $12 million for Senate Bill 155, or the tech ed funding, and $1.9 million for a GED accelerator program in addition to holding on to our current funding in what was clearly a tough session up in Topeka. So I think our executive director for KACCT, certainly our lobbyists, Divine and Donnelly, certainly the rapid response team of presidents that Linda Fund has put together, you know, I see emails on a regular basis when the legislature's in session, hey, we need you to come testify in this committee, we need you to come and speak, you know, to this group, we need you to work this particular set of legislators, and so on and so forth. I think it was a real team effort, KACCT team effort, and I think it certainly has paid off for us in this legislative session anyway. So I think that's good news for our entire college community, you know, as well as the college communities, you know, the 19 colleges in Kansas. So more information to follow for sure.
You said how much on the GED for marketing?
You'll have to look at it when I send it to you. For marketing, there's, it just says there's some money allocated in there for it, so. And the last thing I would report to you is trustee, trustees Daniels and Maddox and I have met with a couple of board members of the Endowment Association. We've had a couple of meetings in the last few weeks, and they've been very productive meetings. We met the other day with them, also with Mr. Wynn and Dr. Givens, as we are all seeking to find a way forward in how a new restructure might look like to include a foundation in the Endowment Association and so on and so forth. So we just wanted to report to you, they have reached out to us in a very positive way. They are motivated, and their board is unified in, in getting this done. And so we are working on some of that information, which we will present to the entire board in, in detail at a later date as soon as we get some of that worked out. So Darrell, would you have anything to comment or add with respect to-
Chairman, you've done a masterful job.
All right, thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, in all the moving around of the agenda, we missed, there's a campus police report and a conjuration report.
We surely didn't miss anything.
And I just want to get on the record that they're in there. We don't, you know, unless there's questions, I just want to be sure we have a record that we-
I can tell you, Jason was, Jason Seaver was to give their report. He has a very serious and, and critical situation that he's at the hospital with his family. His grandchild is in distress, and it's, it's critical. So he couldn't be here tonight. So that's why we didn't ask that you keep him in your prayers, him and his family and the child.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would have to, one more indulgence of the board. We have a young man that's been sitting here through the whole board meeting, waiting for the action on the human resource at the end before we could do this, but I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Ann Abernathy, who's going to take over as our T4E Program Manager.
Oh, congratulations.
All the board meetings are not this long.
Yeah. Want to put that out there right up front. Absolutely. Okay. Any unfinished business? Will we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? You're welcome to stay. We are adjourned.